Hi, Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. City Clerk, I just wanted to add for the record, since we did talk about a number of additional litigations in closed session, for the record, the ZISA litigation, the Malvazia litigation, the Ryo-Do litigation. I also want to add for the record, we did intend to go into closed session to speak about the legal issues relating to the first reading of the ordinance involving the Hackensack University Medical Center. However, Councilwoman Keeling Geddes advised that we'll just have an offline conversation about that, so that was not discussed. If it had been discussed, we would have excused the mayor, but since it was not discussed, he was not excused.
Thank you. I need a motion to...
Adhere on the COW.
Adhere on the COW session, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:40, six, seven, sec., notice of which was sent to the Record and the Star Ledger and was posted on Municipal Development Board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go into any business, I do have two proclamations tonight. One is for Arbor Day, and I'll read them. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in the state of Nebraska, and whereas the city of Hackensack has for the 25th year been recognized as a Tree City USA for its tree planting efforts, and whereas Arbor Day will be observed on Friday, April 28, 2017, with the planting of a tree at Fairmount Elementary School, and whereas such tree shall be dedicated as the superhero tree in honor of the children at Fairmount School who are dedicated to protecting the earth. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, with other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees, parks, woodlands, and urban forests here in the city of Hackensack. All right, and also this Saturday is the Hackensack Spring City Cleanup. What time does that meeting start, H.B. No? Nine o'clock at the Cultural Arts, down by Atlantic Street Park. And I have another proclamation here, is whereas Paint the Town Pink is an event to raise awareness of ways to prevent breast cancer, and whereas the goals for Paint the Town Pink are to encourage women in our community aged 40 and older to have their annual mammogram and to continue to put their overall wellness first in their lives, and whereas furthermore the goals of Paint the Town Pink are to raise awareness and to make a difference in the lives of women in our community, and whereas the reason behind the event is simply because early detection and improved state of well-being is a woman's best defense against cancer, and whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Hackensack call upon all residents to take urge the women in their lives to get their annual mammogram and put wellness first in their lives. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, with other members of the city council, do hereby Paint the Town Pink for the month of May 2017 in the city of Hackensack. This is a very concerted effort with the Betty Torricelli Breast Center at the hospital and the city, as well as merchants throughout town, will be displaying things in pink in their windows, and it's a great showing, and it brings awareness to a very, very, very important issue. So, thank you, and I'll give these to the clerk, to the chair. You know, get them later. Excuse me. Madam Clerk, was everybody here for the COW regular minutes, regular meeting of the March 28?
Actually, you were absent for this particular meeting.
Okay, so, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the COW session of March 28, 2017?
You can do them together, because...
Okay, and the regular minutes, we'll do them together. Need a motion?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Cowl of stain. And the city manager's report, please.
Community mayor and council invite a guest. City manager's report for April 24, 2017, potholes. We are all aware that we have many potholes, and we are working as fast as we can to resolve this condition. We've hired an outside contractor that's working with our two-crew team for the city of Hackensack, and we are diligent to achieve that. We put 12 yards of asphalt in today. Our enemy right this minute is the rain, but obviously if it doesn't rain, we're on the pothole repair. Should you see potholes, please report potholes to the pothole hotline, 201-646-8058, and we thank you for your insert and bringing these conditions to us. Clean Communities Grant Update is Saturday, April 29. Greg Leosie's in charge of it. It's the Slam Dunk the Junk Earth Day Cleanup. We had one last Saturday, but we have another one this coming Saturday, and new flyers will be posted. Poplar Avenue paving update, there was some concern when they called for a mark-out because we had retained the services of Fletcher Kramer to fix two or four of the catch basins on Poplar, so they went out, when they called for a mark-out, marked the street, so then there was some confusion that we thought that PSEG was going to do some repairs on the road we were about to pave. We finally got this straightened out, they were only doing the mark-out for the construction for Fletcher Kramer, so we will be milling and paving within the next two weeks. The two garbage trucks, the contract needs to be advertised for 10 days because we have gone for a co-op purchase, but there's some requirements for this co-op, so the two garbage trucks contract needs to be advertised for 10 days prior to the passing of the resolution. The resolution will be on our next meeting, May 16. The Hackensack Shred Event is scheduled for June 10, rain or shine, in the Sears parking lot. Flyers are available in City Hall lobby and is also on the website. Lisa Shalala, our recycling coordinator, runs the entire event. As the mayor spoke before, Arbor Day celebration is scheduled for Friday, April 28, at 2:00 p.m. at the Fairmount School. This concludes my report, but I have to introduce Patrice from the Upper Main Alliance Budget Hearing. You're up.
Good evening.
Sit here. You want to sit here?
Uh, no, it's okay. That's okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Patrice Forisman, the executive director of the Main Street Business Alliance. On behalf of the volunteer board, we remain grateful to the city of Hackensack and their continued support and leadership as we move forward with our long-term goal of transforming our downtown. In addition to budgeting for the long-term rehabilitation, the alliance has replenished its grant programs to support new and existing businesses on Main Street. Member businesses can still take advantage of facade signage and awning grants. Additionally, this budget will continue to fund a comprehensive marketing plan geared towards attracting full-time residents and foot traffic to the downtown business district. The year ahead sees the continuation of the Creative Placemaking Initiative with two primary art installation events planned, as well as greater visibility at alliance-sponsored events, including the 2017 Street Festival. Moreover, with direction from the city, the alliance has continued its line item for public relations and branding initiatives to help shape and deliver the message of Main Street's rehabilitation. Finally, the 2017 budget continues to fund daily maintenance of the street and visual improvements on Main Street. Again, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Main Street Business Alliance, we respectfully submit our budget, and thank you again for the continued support.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No, really.
Thanks again for your support and contributed...
Thank you, Patrice, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
I need you to open to the public for discussion.
Yes. I need a motion to open to the public on the Main Street Alliance Budget.
Offer.
Second.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on the Main Street Alliance Budget, please come forward.
Yes, Kathleen Salvo, Hudson Street, Hackensack. Included in the Main Street Budget, does that include snow removal? Because they did a squeaky-clean, beautiful job on Main Street when it snowed last time, and I saw that our men were there on Saturday and they were there at night. Do they pay for this, or does the city, do taxpayers pay for this?
No, that is paid for by the taxpayers, and that just doesn't include the Main Street Alliance area. That includes Main Street from the courthouse all the way up to Sears.
But that is the Main Street Alliance, that's Main Street. What do you mean doesn't? How do you separate this?
The Main Street Alliance, I believe, stops at Atlantic, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe Patrice can help me.
Yeah.
Stops at Atlantic Street.
And I will tell you that our Commercial District Services, which is the private entity that we pay for, we're responsible for cleaning off the sidewalks on Main Street.
Right, but the street was done, and it seems like our men, it was overtime, it was done, it was there on a Saturday, they don't work on Saturdays, and it was there one night. So we pay our DPW to do this, off-hours? Where some of the schools there, they didn't get squeaky-cleaned their curbs. How does that work, Mr. Eisenberg?
The city had overtime for the DPW workers to clean it. It wasn't done on a Saturday. I believe it was done on...
It was one night, because I drove...
Two weeknights.
Yeah, it was a weeknight, because I drove up, and I was surprised to see them working at night.
But because of the width of Main Street, if we didn't remove that snow, and you have people walking in the street, it's a safety condition.
Well, it's also wrong where it says, "Mr. Mayor, no parking when road is snow-covered," and that's not enforced, and that's been bad for five snowstorms.
We have, for the last three years, actually removed the snow off of Main Street because it is our business district. It's very, it's impossible for buses and cars to manage themselves in that area with just a plow going through there. It's quite effective, it works quite well, and it's well worth whatever we have to pay...
Okay, so the taxpayers' money is used for that.
For plowing the streets, yes.
Also, Atlantic Street Park, that, up at Main Street, said they were going to take care of, and it's a lot of vegetation there to take care of, and I know that our men are doing that, too, and they have all the baseball fields to do, and they have all our parks to do, and up at Main Street, the alliance said they were going to do it, and then they backed off, and now the city of Hackensack is paying for that, too, and that's taxpayers' money is happening there, too. And there's a lot of vegetation, there's way too much for them to pay, as we are paying for all those lights that, there's way too many. It just seems that we, the taxpayers, are doing a lot of stuff that should be done by others, plus, you know, our taxes and everything else, and this is what all this development has come to. So, that's another thing that I'm concerned about, and I'm sure everybody that pays taxes is also.
Anybody else who'd like to speak on the budget of the Main Street Alliance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. You're all done with your city manager's report, nothing else?
Yes, sir. I'm done.
Start new businesses. Resolution 112-17, please.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 8-2017, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Yes, I know there's certain, Kathleen Salvo, I know there's certain criteria to qualify for these parking spaces, but also I see a lot of that have been around a long time, and the people that requested them are dead. So, does anybody go back and see the ones that are in existence, if they're really being used?
If I may, Mrs. Salvo, I would say relate only to this ordinance...
Well, it is relating to this ordinance. Are we passing more? I want to know what the ones are that existing or not being addressed.
The ones that are not existing, besides this one, are irrelevant to this ordinance. I would say that I would bring that up during your public session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 8-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 113-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 9-2017, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicap. This one is actually to remove a space.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 9-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 16, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 114-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 10-2017, an ordinance adopting 321 Main Street Redevelopment Plan consisting of Block 407.01, lots 2, 5, 6.01, 6.02, 7, 34, 36.01, 36.02, 37, 39, and 40.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 10-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 16, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 115-17.
This is an introduction of ordinance number 11-2017, an ordinance to enter into a lease agreement with the Hackensack University Medical Center for certain air rights above Second Street for the construction of a modern surgical platform.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
I refuse myself on this. No vote.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 11-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 16, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 116-17.
This is a resolution adopting the Main Street Business Alliance 2017 Budget.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 117-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 118-17.
This is a resolution in support of establishing a turn restriction in regulating the entrance-exit of the newly constructed 7-Eleven store on Powell Fly Road.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 119-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated April 20, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 120-17.
This is a resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 121-17.
This is a resolution authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget for NJSA 40A:4-20.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 122-17.
Resolution to award the bid contract to D&amp;L paving contractors for the 2017 road resurfacing project.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 123-17.
This is a resolution to award the bid contract to New Prince Concrete for the Main Street State Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 124-17.
This is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 101 Prospect Avenue.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 125-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 125 Atlantic Street.
May I have a motion?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 126-17.
This is a resolution to authorize release of escrow for 184 Burdan Place.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Resolution one twenty-seven dash seventeen.
This is a resolution authorizing the agreement between the city of Hackensack and the Hackensack DPW Sanitation Employees United Public Service Employees Union, otherwise UPS EU, for the period January first, two thousand and fifteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Resolution one twenty-eight dash seventeen.
This is a resolution authorizing prospective consent of assignment of parking lease for permanent financing of one hundred State Street redevelopment project.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Resolution one twenty-nine dash seventeen, the payment of bills.
This is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Uh, we do have one item in the consent agenda. Does anybody have a conflict or anything they want pulled on this? Only one, so. Okay, here we none.
Okay, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda insists of resolution one thirty, which is a resolution urging reduction of local affordable housing burdens and provide defined rules and relief.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Thank you. This time I'd like to open up to the floor. Need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Okay, anybody would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. You'll have five minutes, please.
Richard Stall can Hackensack, New Jersey. At the April eleventh meeting, Jason Nunamacher questioned the expenditure by the city of two hundred and seventy-five dollars for tickets purchased by the city for the attendance by the council at the annual fashion show fundraiser. Now, let me preface my findings, remarks. It would be a nice thing if their next budget allocated a thousand dollars to the Mergantia Society. Be a wonderful thing. It's a good thing, great purpose, but it's not an appropriate expenditure. And no matter how good you think an expenditure is, it's got to benefit the taxpayers for it to be kosher. Now, at that meeting, the responses received from some of the council who responded, Mr. Mayor, you said, "I believe it's always been done that way. I know it's been done that way in the past by prior councils I sat on to this show." Mrs. Canastrino said it wasn't political, but you were quick to point out your running major was there, has no connection to the high school, bought her own ticket. Appropriate. And it was political, and it should have been there. You're running for office. Hundreds of people from Hackensack there. It would have been ridiculous straight after. Mr. Pataglia states, "It's been this way for thirty, forty years." Well, I opened, and I just handed you, John, a copy of the Oprah. I wanted them to go back to two thousand and five, because I know from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and five, it wasn't done. Because, Mr. Mayor Zeez, still yet, that's the purpose of having a city attorney. Sorry, Steve, to purchase those things for you. Um, and I did. Uh, and I went back, and they said, "We have no records of any such purchases of those tickets prior to two thousand and fifteen." You're in office. And the first thing I noticed in two thousand and fifteen was a ticket purchase for David Trost. What a humanitarian, making a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, can't reach into his own pocket for this great cause. And here's what he said in the ticket form. "If possible, I would like to be seated with Hackensack Mayor and Council." So you knew, you were there, you went to that, as you said, you go wherever you're here. You paid out of your own pocket, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, again. Mr. Trost, what a humanitarian. He wanted to be seated with Mayor LaBras and Councilwoman Deborah Keeling Gettis, because I guess you guys bought your own tickets. Suddenly, this year, a lot of respect for your service.
Please.
Thank you. Just for once, this was wrong. You know, some time ago, I asked you about that newsletter that Amorado did, that was clearly a political piece, which you even admitted. I said, "Pay the city back." The billion-dollar downtown piece was clearly a political piece. Pay the city back. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I understand your fundraiser's going very, very well. Pay the city back. I'd ask each of you to respond. Do you think you should pay the city back? Can I ask through the mayor, each of you, please respond?
No, and I don't feel there's a time and place to respond to that. Thank you.
You don't necessarily speak for everybody else. Does anybody?
All right, this is the first I'm hearing of it. I wasn't here at the last meeting. Um, if it comes to that, I have no problem paying it back if that, if it comes to that. This is the first I'm hearing of it.
I, I think you should. I think you all should. I think it's so clearly an inappropriate expenditure. It's not a big amount of money, but it's not an appropriate expenditure of taxpayer funds, whatever your Hudson County fellows think.
Please, no back and forth in the audience, please. Thank you.
Jason Som, Prospect Avenue. I, I just wanted to quickly share a story with you. Um, this fall, I volunteered down at the football field. I coached junior league football. And we played West New York, and these kids had brand-new equipment, brand-new jerseys. And one of my kids, you know, came over to me and said, "Hey, Coach, when are we going to get this brand-new jerseys? Why does West New York have this?" I asked Mr. Aaron Berg at a couple of meetings ago if you would consider speaking about covering the insurance for junior football. Now, it boggles the mind that I've seen the sports dome is, is in the plan to be, to be purchased, and still soccer and football are both not covered by any insurance for the city. So now I'm going to ask the council directly. Is it in your plan, when the sports dome is built, to cover soccer and football, which are two major sports in the city that are not covered?
Soccer got its own insurance.
Soccer does have its own insurance, and what I'm saying is, that's exactly what I'm saying, Mr. Pataglia. It should not be that way. The city should cover the insurance for soccer and football. They're two major sports that's played in the city. And, and, excuse me, excuse me, it's my turn to speak. And at the end of the day, you're spending eight million dollars on a sports dome and not covering the insurance for two of the main sports that are going to play there.
The key, Aaron, the recreation program, they are covered by the.
Leo, go through the chair, please.
Mr. Mayor, would you please respond to my question? Is it, is it part of the plan?
Are you done with your time?
No, but I would like a response to that question, sir.
Well, when you're, finish your time, and I'll give a response. Thank you.
The, the rest of my statement's going to be based on the answer to that question.
My response to that is, I believe that the city should be working towards paying the insurance for all sports programs in town. We've had some issues with the JIF. There's some disagreements on towns that have JIFs that are the same JIF where their, Maywood, for instance, might have the same JIF as Hackensack. They should cover Maywood kids playing in Hackensack. That's, that's my opinion on that, and I will go to bat for that, absolutely. No doubt about it.
Okay, and the, the other part of the question is, so the eight million dollars going to the sports dome, will there be money put aside for new equipment for these sports? All of them. If you take one percent of what we're spending on the sports dome, you could buy all new equipment and all new jerseys and new things for every single sport in the city.
All these things, Jason, will be addressed as, as they come along, as we bring in more revenue from some of these projects that are becoming in. We obviously will be putting money back into the city and sports, youth sports is one of my passions, along with Dave and Leo's. So yeah, my answer to that would be yes. I can't say what equipment we're getting, at what time, but yes, we'll be putting money back into these sports programs.
I just, I find it mind-boggling that building the dome is of such importance, but taking care of the programs isn't. Thank you.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. Um, I, I've come to, uh, the realization, although I really knew this. You, you don't listen to understand what we're saying. You listen with the intent to reply at the end when we cannot respond back, which, again, was something you detested about prior administration, but there you go, doing it. And I'm doing it. You don't listen to hear what we're saying. And proof of that, Mrs. Canastrino, is you were discussing property taxes on my home with a third person. Not with my husband, not with anybody that lives in my home, with a third person saying, "Regina must know they went down in twenty fifteen." I stood here and said that. My assessed value went down in twenty fifteen, and then went down five thousand dollars. It's gone up eleven thousand dollars. It's a volatile thing. You don't listen. You don't want to hear what we have to say. Mr. LaBras, last meeting, I said cuckoo bird, which you took as a mental health pejorative. A cuckoo bird is a bird that lays its eggs in another bird's nest, and the most disrespectful bird there is, and it goes off and has its freedom without taking the responsibility. So I said cuckoo bird, and I'm tired of you taking potshots at me at the end of meetings. You do it over and over and over again. Newsflash, I'm not running. I'm not running for anything. I live here and I care. You taking potshots at me is, is so wrong. You're, you're like a little, you're like little kids, and you're little kids. Oh, my gosh. This is, this is, you know, this is disgusting. This is the gutter. I would ask you how low Squibinsky will go, but I think he might take it as a challenge. It's horrible, horrible. Your literature, what you can't say, you can't stand on what you did. You have to take potshots at residents. You're doing it to me. You do it to me. You're doing it to others in there. You do it to me every meeting. And I'm really, you know, really? Because I care? Because I get up here and say what I want, what I think? That's open and transparent government. No, you have to be afraid that what, somebody's going to say something about you. Um, this, this one with the development, the fifteen million dollars, seriously? Seriously? That's only if we don't have a bunch of holes in the ground. That's only if they get completed. And development at no cost? What about the cost of servicing, the so, cost of maintaining? The, it, this is more empty campaign promises. More. The six hundred dollar tax cut that you're proposing, you're working on? You can't do that. That has to come from the legislature. Another empty promise, because we're saying, "What are you doing for us here and now?" Nothing. You tried to take away our sanitation department when we asked for two times a week. We still, that was another empty campaign promise. We're not getting two times a week pickup. You, you promised that we'd have ward representation. You don't know what goes on in my neighborhood, and you don't really care, do you? Because, Mr. LaBras, oh, Regina wanted, you know, five cars towed, which I never said. I have a narrow street. If there's no parking on Monday or Thursday in the morning, there should be no parking, especially when it snows. Okay? But you don't care what goes on in my neighborhood. But you don't have the ward representatives you promised. You, you just can't relate to us. You cannot relate to the residents. You sit up there, and especially Kathy, you, because when you work well with somebody, you think you can control them. Okay? I don't work well with you, Kathy. You cannot control me. You cannot sit there and try to tell me what I know. Okay? You just can't do it. I'm tired of it. This is personal, because you made it personal. You kept calling me out at the end of meetings. You kept doing it. That's why it's personal. Um, another promise you were going to work on is moving elections to, all elections to November. The meeting wouldn't have had to be switched tonight if you had done that, but that's another thing you didn't follow through with. And, you know, I'm, I'm fed up. And if you take a pot shot at me, do it now. Do it now. You got time. Crickets? How much time we got? Uh, stand here.
Sixteen seconds.
I'm giving you the opportunity.
Are you done with your comments, Mrs.?
I am giving you the opportunity.
You're asking us to take potshots at you. Obviously, no, you don't want to take a pot shot.
You, oh, do it at the end of every meeting, and you can go look at any video and see it. You take potshots at me at the end of every meeting. If you have something to say to me, say it now.
I have your point, Mrs. De Pasco, loud and clear.
Man up.
Next, please.
Good evening, Paul Nichols.
Evening, Paul.
I went to, uh, I went to the county meeting, freeholders' meeting. I did not get an answer about the, um, the bus terminal probation property, and I was thinking a lot about that, because it would make sense. Doesn't do them any good there. You know, it's better for a private builder to utilize that, and good time to segue into affordable housing. Um, it's, uh, pretty scary when on the county website, they're saying that there, the, the federal government's making so many cutbacks that a person with a two-bedroom apartment with a new voucher, or just a two-bedroom apartment, now has to consider a living room or one, one of the bedrooms. That's, that's pretty drastic. So, um, I, I would think that there's a way to accommodate, you know, I, I, I know what you're, um, your ideas about this is, and I, I, I like, there's nothing wrong with building up and revitalizing and bringing in big companies, and that's what we should be doing. And that's hard work, it is, but you bring in big companies, get, people have good-paying jobs, and I know it's not that simple, and then, you know, people will be able to afford to live here, and there'll be more revenue for the town. I'm not a, I'm not big with math or anything like that, or budgeting, but it just sounds common sense, simple to me, especially coming from, you know, all these county meetings and what they're, and, and they're all up in arms, too, about this affordable housing thing being forced on people, but, um, you know, it's with the times. I think it's, it, it's only right. It's, let's not fight the, the federal government. I don't trust them, and I have no problem saying that. They're fighting us, but let's not let them win and us fight against ourselves. Let's all work together, men, and go forward. That, that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, please.
I'm Rich Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. You know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be civilized tonight, so.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay? Is that fine?
Yes.
Uh, I want to be civilized, and I, I want to start by going back to the last meeting. We, I was talking about leadership here, and, uh, we discussed a few things. And when I sat down, Kathy said, "Thank you for your political statement, Mr. Serbo." So, you know, I don't get to respond to that, so maybe I'll respond now, and we'll discuss what politics is, or what the meaning of is is, okay? So, look, uh, politics, politics goes back to the ancient world. It does. We have a connection still with the ancient world. You know, our founders built this democracy, uh, on the Athenian model. So there's a real connection with the ancient Greeks and the political thinkers there, especially Plato. Plato, Plato spoke about politics. Everyone is political, Plato said. And if you're not, if you're not political, you're either a god or a beast. Now, uh, you know, not many people walking around are gods or beasts, so everyone's political. Now, saying that, and everyone being political, there must be a million meanings to what being political is and what politics really is. So everyone has a different thought about it. Kathy, of course, does. You do, and we all do. But let me explain what I think it might be, so maybe you'll, you'll like my definition of it better than your own. Okay? So, politics is not about pulling the wool over people's eyes, okay? It's not about bickering and personal destruction and ruining people's careers. It's not about, you know, firing people that weren't supportive of you, or, you know, we're tired of this. Hackensack is tired of it, okay? There's been lots of it. Now, what politics really is, okay, if you, if you read political thought, politics is really about the betterment of the community. It is to improve our lives. It's to do many things, not bicker, not, uh, you know, not ruin people, not, uh, you know, using the definition that it's become. Okay? So, let's, let's get back to, let's get back to what, uh, politics, uh, really is, and let's improve this community. I mean, it's, it's gone on too long. The political fighting in this town has gone on too long. It's holding the city back. It's still holding the city back, and it's time to move forward, okay? So let's redefine politics, and when Kathy kind of blares out that, you know, someone makes a political statement, maybe she should understand the definition of politics before she makes a statement. Okay? So, thanks a lot, and good luck to you both.
Same to you, Mr. Serbo. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Vito Bernetti, Cedar Avenue, Hackensack. I'm here to make a public service announcement. Bergen Grassroots, a non-political or, nonprofit organization, is sponsoring an open public debate for this municipal election. As I said, they're a nonprofit, and they have a history of sponsoring electoral forums throughout Bergen County. If you're interested, you can find their website under BergenGrassroots.org. Tomorrow, Bergen Grassroots has scheduled an organizational meeting with all three, uh, teams or slates to discuss and finalize the details to, for this debate, including the date, the venue, and most importantly, the format, which would include questions, uh, the rules, moderators, and anything else that would have to, uh, be for that event. This announcement will then be made once we reach a decision with the three slates. Will be announced in the press, social media, and the Bergen, uh, Grassroots website. We believe this is an important event to educate the citizens about the pressing needs confronting Hackensack. It's the county seat. We have over forty-five thousand people. Now, I know that there have been several closed forums, uh, which have been reported in the record, but we want to establish and to actually sponsor an open public debate in which all people are going to be invited and possibly to participate based upon the forum and the format that the, uh, groups have, uh, agreed upon. I'll be in the back or in the hallway if anyone would like to have any questions about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernetti.
Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive. I have lived in this city for forty-eight years now, and frankly, for most of those years, I found councils doing absolutely nothing. Uh, they would sit up there and, except for the time when we had Mr. Squill, fortunately, as our city manager, who kind of ran things without paying any attention to the council, not much got done. I applaud this council for its vision. I applaud this council for its achievements, and I wish this council good luck in its run for the election on May ninth, I believe it is. Um, I hope we see your faces up there again for the next term.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
I would just like to challenge that last statement, Catherine Sauer. I don't see, I don't see any vision. I don't see any achievements. I just see empty promises. I see an empty hole on Main and Mercer. I see money, taxpayers' money going to every place but where it should. I see a dome, like Mr. Um, Som said, eight million dollars. We could do a lot of money with that for our kids. And so it's not for the kids. It was supposed to be a multipurpose dome, and if it were so, then we combine Mr. Sims and Mr. Pataglia's under one roof, have one staff, one insurance policy and everything. It's not a multipurpose. It's for soccer only, and it's for adult soccer players. The soccer people came up here and told you they didn't want it, but yet we're getting it. Mr. Sims, we cannot put that building in the first ward. It doesn't fit. It's going to bring hardship to the first ward. It's, it's a disaster, and it's going to cost too much money. I, it's, you're not open and transparent. Usually, they give a, people who get elected, they give them the first hundred days. We've had four years of nothing except promises and no results. You have done nothing. You can't even collect the garbage right. That's an everyday occurrence that was happening forever. And maybe they should show you the Brooklyn Bridge, because all these developers are in your heads. It's a fool's development when you build apartments. Anybody could build apartments. I remember Mr. Zizer wrote a column, like when he was in, that nobody builds apartments, because that's like so empty. And then the other thing, everything's become a safety with you. Mr. Mayor, I told you not to pave it in December, because it was a bad time. And when I sat down, you said, "Oh, well, people will be complaining if we didn't pave those streets off of Hudson Street." But the bottom line was, is that we didn't get the crosswalks until May. You put all those people in jeopardy, because there was no place for them to cross. Well, Ja, December, January, February, March, April, and May, no crosswalks. You paved them, but we didn't get the crosswalks, because it was too cold to put that up. I told you about the responsibility of not putting that building there, and you said, "You don't have to go by the codes of the, of the zoning board, that it's a hundred percent land coverage, that there's not enough of parking spaces." You put parking spaces on Atlantic Street. You put parking spaces on Atlantic Street on a traffic lane. You put parking spaces in front of the Culture Art Building, which was a money pit, and still dumping money into it. And all these things cost money. They cost money to maintain. Our budget's gonna go unreal. We're the only municipality in Bergen County that our budget, municipality budget exceeds the school budget, which is amazing.
I challenge you on that. I challenge you on that. We are.
Challenge all you want.
Yeah, we are. We, we spend way too much money, and we're getting nothing in return. So, if we can't, we can't even, I wanna, all right, Oprah, I know I'm right. Um, it's been, it's been a disaster. It's been, you've been a disappointment. Um...
Please, audience.
The coming election, people, mix and match your ticket. Don't put anybody, don't give anybody won control. Let's mix and match, so we have ideas from everybody else. This one, everybody up there has their own agenda. Nothing was for the people. I found it very empty. So, next coming election, and the airport people, anybody will support the airport. Remember that nobody attended that meeting. Regina and I were the only ones that attended that, uh, airport meeting, and you guys didn't care until the people from the apartment houses made it one of their projects. So, I think anybody that gets in is gonna support not, uh, changing the airport pattern. So, I, I encourage everybody to mix and match your ticket, and maybe we'll get somebody up there that cares about Hackensack. Thank you.
Good evening. Frances Kajelja, Catalpa Ave, Catalpa Avenue. Um, just a couple of comments. Um, one is that I watched, uh, the last meeting televised on my computer, and I wanted to bring my eleven-year-old daughter, Olivia, to this meeting, because she's very civic-minded, um, and she's very excited about elections, and I bring her with me into the voting booth each, each time. Um, but I have to say, I'm glad I watched it first, because after I heard Mr. Salkin use the words, "Someone was pimping themselves out for some reason," um, I really was hesitant to bring her, because I don't wanna have to explain what that means. Um, so I kinda just wanna remind this council that there could be future meetings where there are children in the, um, in the crowd, and I think it's really important to call people out who use inappropriate words, um, when they're at this microphone. Um, so just putting that aside, I have a question for you from Olivia, my daughter, because she will watch it, um, televised. This is past her bedtime, but she really wanted to come tonight. Um, so she's been seeing all the literature that comes in, all the political literature for the three slates that are running. So, I'm posing this question for my daughter. She would like to know from all of you, if possible, what does honest government mean to you?
Who wants to go first?
You go first.
I'll go first.
You are there.
Excuse me. Audience, please. Honest government, to me, means transparent government, where the people know what's going on. Honest government is us being involved out there with the people, so they can see what we're doing. Um, honest government is us sitting up here every two weeks, willing to take whatever is thrown at us, and stick to our guns with our game plan. Um, honest government is putting out there the facts of what we've been doing, whether people like it or not, or whether they disagree with it or not, or whether they choose to fabricate that it's something totally different. Uh, it's to have a game plan. It's to keep the people aware of it, and to move forward with it. And the transparency board. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, for me, honest government is to try to do the best for the city, to bring the city on the right track. I will say, our city, for a long time, was really neglected. Now, we are trying to bring the city on the right track for the benefit of all the residents.
Thank you.
I'll just add, I believe that honest government is also making all your decisions based on what is the best thing for the city, not to have a personal agenda, but to look not only short-term, but long-term as to what are the best options, and try and implement that to the best of our abilities. I also believe that honest government is about being, coming forward and being open to folks with new ideas, getting feedback from individuals on those new ideas, and implementing to the best of your ability.
Thank you.
Dave?
I think it's about making the best decisions on issues that are put before you, and making decisions as far as if you make a wrong decision, that you make an adjustment.
Thank you.
What's good, David?
Um, yes, honest government, um, I think is mainly about transparency, and it starts right up here. Um, it, uh, deals with, like you said, making good decisions, what you think are good decisions for the, uh, the residents, and, um, you know, and having the residents be able to have input in the decisions that you think should go forth, you know, for the city. Um, I think that's a big part of honest government, of having the dialogue between the citizens and the council, you know, for, uh, different projects, different issues, whatever, and having an honest, honest respectable conversation about it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
If I could just add to that real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, it's also knowing to say when you're wrong, or, and I'll bring up the sanitation issue, which was also been brought up before. You know, that was a, we were doing our job by looking into something and going out to bid to see if it was a worthwhile venture for the city to possibly privatize sanitation. Uh, the people came out, the community came out...
I was at some of those meetings, if you remember.
And we listened, and we made the adjustment, like Mr. Sim says, and we decided not to do it, because we listened to the people. Mrs. Sauer?
Yes, to us.
Oh, my.
Not sure if I have, do I have a minute left?
No.
Hmm, you have one second. Okay.
Thank you.
And Olivia, thanks you.
Hi, Olivia. Thank you. Next, please.
Sal Moretti. I'm currently living in, on Alpine Drive in Paramus, but, uh, for over forty years, I was on Park Street in Hackensack. Um, I would just like to say that, uh, over seventy-seven years ago, I was born in Hackensack, and, uh, at that time, um, Franklin Roosevelt was in his second term. He didn't start his, uh, third term yet, and, uh, Frank C. Ziza was a teenager, and, uh, he was, uh, shortly to be, um, drafted for the Second World War. Uh, it's interesting to me to hear some critiques of Hackensack at this time, but one thing which is important to recognize is that Hackensack is, um, the county seat and is unfortunately adjacent to, um, a metropolitan area, which is, uh, overwhelming, uh, and in particular Madison Avenue and, uh, the New York City downtown. So, in nineteen thirty-one, at the very pit of the, or the beginning of the pit of the Depression, uh, when, uh, they put up the George Washington Bridge, uh, the input, uh, was quite great, and no longer did Hackensack have, uh, prime, uh, access to, uh, transportation commuters. So, uh, since that time, of course, Paramus has taken over with nine, um, shopping centers. Uh, when I was born in nineteen thirty-nine, uh, for reasons which don't appear rational to any of the speakers this evening, uh, I was, um, somewhat, uh, spotlighted and, uh, sent over to Europe, um, perhaps because of the fact that I'm so, was so close to Manhattan. And, uh, I went over to Zurich, to Rome, and to Berlin. Uh, various people have said I could not possibly have been there, because it was such a terrible period. But in point of fact, I, I suspect those speaking tonight give testimony to the fact that psychological stress does bring, uh, access to certain critical issues, which in that case brought me over to the, uh, war zone. Subsequent to the war, uh, I returned to, to New Jersey, and, uh, I went to school in Englewood, and then I, uh, went to school at Fordham, and then transferred to Washington, DC, and George Washington University, where I got a, uh, a law degree, not a law degree, a, um, psychology degree, and over to New York Law School. After I ran for city council nineteen eighty-one here, uh, I got a law degree in, at New York Law School in eighty-five. Uh, trying to apply a law degree to a cacophony of, um, counter, uh, point-counterpoint is rather difficult, and I can see this evening that we have a demonstration of that fact. Uh, I don't wish to, uh, well, I see, I have three forty-five. I have one minute to go. Uh, I would just like to say that when I was here in the seventies, Joseph Squillis was here, Wilbur Lind, and, uh, Doris Dukes was the, uh, uh, city, uh, city clerk. Um, I also, uh, recall Frank Long, Frank Long Go on the zoning board, and Roger Matei. And, uh, I, um, uh, was very interested, uh, being from, um, Hackensack, or having a background in Hackensack and Bergen County. Um, I, uh, went down to George Washington University, uh, at the beginning of the JFK, uh, administration. And, uh, one of the times that I went down there in September for class, uh, for school year, uh, they had, uh, the Cuban Missile Crisis. Uh, another time, when I went back to GW, uh, Richard Nixon was being indicted or, uh, forced to resign, uh, and John Dean, uh, and, uh, I, uh, passed to each other when I was living at, uh, the YMCA, right next to the, uh...
That's it. That's it.
Five eleven. I must...
We're ready. Your time's up, but thank you very much. Next, please.
Peter Marcuszany, Davis Avenue. Just, uh, listening to that history and, uh, memories of the war years, I, I just dawned on me, and I, I don't think I'm mistaken. I think today is Holocaust Memorial Day.
Yes, it is.
Uh, something that we should really, really keep in mind when we think back on, on the days of, uh, those terrible years. Uh, and on a lighter note, I was gonna say, you know, "Give me liberty or give me asphalt," and, uh, the paving that was done last year, I think, was, was quite miraculous. Also, listening to this gentleman bring back some of the, the names, you know, with Squillis and Wilbur Lind, makes us think back as to how things were, you know, forty-five years ago, and how far we have really fallen in the intervening years, and how much you have worked to resurrect some of those good years in Hackensack. Uh, what you've done over the last four years now, I think, is quite, quite phenomenal. The dedication is overwhelming. I listened to Mr. Mangen a few meetings ago talk about his ideas of public service, and what it means to him to be a public servant. And I see he's here tonight, and I know, I know he's not on the payroll tonight, and that says an awful lot about somebody who was interested in seeing how things are going in our city, and trying to keep his ear in tune to the requests of the, the citizens and their concerns. I've also listened to the usual suspects come up again, and I'm happy to say that, uh, the nitpicking has gotten nittier and pickier, and that's a good sign. It shows there's no more objection to this council as there was perhaps in the past. I don't wanna jinx the election, but I'm looking forward to your next four years in office, and wanna work with you, you know, uh, for the good of the city. Uh, I can't, I can't believe, and maybe you can clarify this briefly, the Main Street Alliance is totally self-funded, as far as, as far as I understand. Uh, they do things with the money that's allocated to them, that comes out of their own pockets, and just, I guess, by law, is turned around through a resolution of the council, to do certain things to enhance Main Street. And basically, plowing the snow on Main Street is not one of them. That's a responsibility of the city, just like it's your responsibility to plow my street. And I was very happy to see that Patrice, with some of the manpower that they have and that they do fund, they do, uh, mass cleaning of the sidewalks, which I, I hope would be good if they coordinated it with the, with the city trucks, so they could push the snow into the street and have it picked up, which I'm sure is probably happening. The other thing is, uh, I just can't understand why people are still struggling with the basic arithmetic of pilots. Uh, it's, people seem to think that pilots are a mass giveaway rather than a revenue generator, and I don't get it. I don't know how much more you can say. I don't know how much more you can beat the bushes to say that the development on the whole is good. The revenue is, it's already generating, it will generate very quickly, and over the long term, uh, will be much more beneficial than some of the assessments that exist on those existing properties. So, uh, I, again, I applaud you for everything you've done. I think we've made remarkable progress in this city, and I look forward to, uh, the next four years, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jack Ziza, Poplar Avenue. I'll say again, the only portion of Poplar Avenue that's not paved. Just one, one question. On February twenty-eighth, you made a statement, Mayor, and I'd like an explanation. Your statement was, "Mayor Jack Ziza with some of the things on Main Street that most people don't even know about." Could you tell me what those things are?
Mr. Ziza, I'm not gonna get into a political discussion with you right here. If you'd like to, uh, reach out to me personally, and I'll sit down with you...
I've tried to sit down with you personally. You canceled both meetings.
I canceled one meeting.
No, you canceled two meetings.
So, I only recall one, and I did cancel one meeting, 'cause I had another obligation, but I'm not gonna discuss that here right now.
Well, you said it. I'm just trying to find out what you meant by it.
February, well, number one...
I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
I'm not gonna think back to February twenty-eighth. I'm not gonna discuss it right here.
It was at a public meeting. This is a public meeting. This is a public forum, and I'm asking a question. Could you give me an answer?
I will give you an answer when, I will sit down and speak with you afterwards, if you'd like.
This is a public forum, and you made a public statement at a public forum. I would like a public answer.
My reference probably was to two ninety-five Main Street. I believe that's a building...
And what does that mean that most people don't know about? He was able to skirt it because of the power they have. What does that mean? What did, what did it mean?
Mr. Ziza, I'm not gonna get into this with you right now. If you'd like to speak with me after the meeting, I'd be glad to sit down with you.
In private? Behind closed doors?
No, I'd sit right here if you'd like.
I'm, I'm asking you publicly. Is there a problem with that?
No, because I don't wanna talk, speak about it publicly. It's a political issue right now, and I'm not gonna get into politics with you.
That's not politics. I'm a citizen. I've asked, uh, for an explanation of this. May I ask Ms. Gettys a question?
Yes, you may.
Ms. Gettys, you just made a statement about honest, open government.
Yes.
Would you say that that flyer that was sent out is an example of honest, open government?
I think you know my opinion on that. No, I wouldn't, because it wasn't open to me.
So although we hear about those things, we really don't practice it all the time. Not you, because you questioned it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public? Ting, Don, motion to close.
Okay.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gattino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Katelyn Gettys?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Need a motion to close the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Wait, wait, wait. Before we close the meeting. Everybody have their shot.
Something to say?
Yep. Go ahead, Leo.
Well, I am glad that we're gonna continue with the...
Now, I can make my comment now?
Well, I am glad that we're gonna continue doing the paving, continuing fixing the sewer lines, and continue to try to improve the recreation facility for the kids. Uh, to say that we don't do anything in the last four years, to me, don't make any sense, because, for instance, I will say that this administration accomplished something that don't happen for many years, that we got reductions in our taxes. And for instance, the S. Mayor got a reduction of over a thousand dollars. His brother got a reduction too. Lingher, we got a reduction, almost twenty-six hundred dollars. And the owner's lawyer that is in the back, the house that he used to live in, Poplar, he got a reduction of a hundred dollars. So, just to say that we never did anything for our citizens is really not true. We tried to do the best. We accomplished... We tried to do the best, we accomplished a lot, and I think if we got the opportunity, we would continue doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Just one thing quickly, Kathy, if you check, the city budget is less than the Board of Education budget. You, you can check it, but I know that that's a fact. I, I really wanted to talk a little bit this evening, just briefly hit a few topics on redevelopment, that's usually what I do talk about. There was one item on the agenda tonight, three twenty-one Main Street. If you want to put that in perspective, you're talking about Upper Main, you're looking at bordering Camden and West Camden and Berry Street. So we're looking at that block there, yeah, one of the cornerstones there is the Ortoni Bank. So you're looking at that area there. Again, a lot of work going on downtown. We're seeing things now moving up into the other area uptown. Not only looking at Main Street, there's been interest throughout the city in many other areas. For example, Anderson Street, we're in the final stages of negotiation with looking at properties on Anderson Street, a developer looking to develop near the train station there. Again, very exciting property.
I came out of retirement, just for you.
Excuse me, folks, please. We require, we require, that's, I just ask that you do the same for us, please.
Did you have Killyn? It's him.
I gave one warning, so if the next warning, please, give us the opportunity to speak. All right, so I talked about Anderson Street. Another very interesting, interesting thing came up just this past week, very early stages, first conversation, but we have some folks very interested on looking at Central Avenue, at doing a redevelopment area there. Again, taking another neighborhood and bringing it back to life. Part of that initiative was also bringing low, moderate income and mixed with some market value income, better retail. Very, very interesting presentation, something that the city's going to continue to explore. Talks today, a little bit, I heard some folks talking about what's going on at Main and Mercer, that's one fifty, one seventy Main Street. We also had good news there. The city had a meeting with the folks that owned the building next door, the one forty-two, one forty-eight Main, that had been damaged, as most of folks know that that is why the construction stopped at that corner. And the, all of the evidence has now been memorialized in that building and is very important for their insurance claim with the other person, not involving the city here. But they had to memorialize all the evidence, document everything, and that stage is now complete and ready to move forward with full demolition of that project. Actually, the city is assisting them in that initiative, so we should be seeing that building come down very, very soon. With that, we should see, again, full resumption of progress at one fifty, one seventy. Great news for the city. Finally, this Wednesday, we see some of our folks here from the condo board, they've been the real fighters and the real go-getters with working with Teterboro Airport and we graciously appreciate that effort. We know that they've been getting a bunch of folks to try and come to that meeting. The FAA is supposed to be attending that meeting, so if you could only go to one, this is the meeting to go to. It's, it's this Wednesday at Teterboro Airport at seven P.M. Our verse, our voices need to be heard, folks need to show up if they can, the more, the better. If we have to wait outside, we've already been told we're not prepared for crowds. If we have to wait outside, we'll wait outside. But we need to, as Hackensackians, get our voices out there and see if we can get that alternate flight pan, plan, not as a recommendation, but enforced as a requirement. And give it a full value test run so we know the results and try and be proactive here before we see something disastrous happen in our town. Thank you all for coming and see you again next time.
Thank you, Kathy. David?
This Saturday, we have our annual clean and community event. We will meet at the Culture Arts Building at nine A.M. for a light continental breakfast and come back for lunch. I want to wish all the candidates good luck at running for different offices. Good night.
Deb?
Well, I just, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I just want to wish every, I hope everyone had a blessed Easter and Passover. I was away observing the Passover, so I wasn't able to address some comments made by the mayor at the March twenty-eighth meeting. The first thing I'd like to talk about was the privatization of the sanitation department, where the mayor blamed Mr. Rotino about, um, looking into this privatization. Okay, Mr. Rotino did look into the privatization per the council's request. He gave them numbers and then suggested that they didn't privatize because he could, he thought that he could fix certain problems within the department. And he also wanted to protect the jobs of the workers, many of whom lived in town. During his time, he started developing a nice relationship with the DPW workers and he was able to implement the two-day garbage pickup at a cost savings of twelve to thirteen thousand per month and was in the midst of acquiring two trucks before he left. So regardless of how you felt about Mr. Rotino when he left, you should really stop throwing mud at him because he was very instrumental in getting you your new position in the Hackensack University Medical Center so you can make more money and have more flexibility in your schedule after you became mayor. And for that, you should be thankful for nothing else. The Summer Concert Series was not my event. It was produced by our resident, Mr. Randy Glover. And, you know, it just helps to know your facts before accusing people so as not to discourage engaged residents from wanting to do nice things for the city. Vision Media. In my last statement, I asked why Mr. Swabinski allowed, was allowed to suspend his own contract. And in your comments to me, you neglected to explain this. There is nothing in his contract that states that he cannot, that he can, upon his discretion, suspend his services. So, I'd like for you to answer these questions during your comments. One, why was Paul Swabinski allowed to suspend his own contract without full council knowledge or approval? Two, has there been any other vendors who have been able to suspend their contracts, such as Mr. Swabinski has? Three, were the departments within the city notified of the services of the PR consultants or were they strictly used just for some members of the council? Now, I was under the assumption that when I voted for Vision Media Services, they would serve the city, not just the council. Four, if it was so important to have a PR consultant from May to February, why isn't it important to have one from February to May? You did four newsletters from September to early February because you thought it was important to communicate with citizens, and now we're doing zero newsletters between February and June, or May or June. Why is it not important to communicate with citizens now? You called the previous city newsletters Mickey Mouse flyers. How insulting to Al Dib, who's been producing those newsletters. Those Mickey Mouse newsletters were good enough for the city until it was time to get more professional flyers in time for election. And those Mickey Mouse flyers gave the residents a lot more information about what was going on in the city. It would have also been nice to have had our latest city manager introduced in one of those flyers. Mr. Kleiman, I am asking for a ruling, I asked before, but I'm again asking for a ruling on the mayor's statement about rehiring Vision Media after the election. Is he or is he not violating New Jersey contracting laws by making a public announcement that the firm that is now working on his campaign will be rehired after the election? Seven, we are treading new waters here with this suspension thing, and I have not found any clause in their contract, in Vision Media's contract, about their being able to suspend their contract. So, I would like to propose an ordinance making it unlawful for future vendors to suspend contracts in midterm to work on city council political campaigns. I don't know if I'll be sitting up here in this seat after May ninth, but as long as I'm here, I will live up to the pledge to do the right thing by the people of this town and try to protect them from manipulators such as Vision Media. Thank you and good night.
Let me start off with the, go to my other comments first, thank you. This past Sunday, we're down the high school football field, there was a junior track meet there, that was incredible, there must have been, I think there were about forty towns there. Stands were packed, I haven't seen the stands filled in, in Comet at Delatorre Field in a long, long time, but just to see, it, it was, there was one touching moment, there was one little boy, he must have been fifty yards behind in like maybe a four-hundred-yard race. But the way everybody cheered him on when he crossed the finish line was really quite heartening, it was a great thing to see and it, all the towns joined in and cheering him on, so it was a nice night. Thursday night, it was at, I was lucky enough to speak at Bergen Reeds, which is part of the Jewish Federation of North Jersey, I was lucky enough to be invited by them to speak, along with the Teaneck Mayor. Teachers from several local schools speak. Bergen Reeds is a group of about a hundred and sixty volunteers that teach and mentor about three hundred and fifty or over three hundred and fifty of our students in our lower levels in schools here in Teeneck and, and Hackensack and in Teeneck. And they do a wonderful job and it was great to spend some time with them and hear about all the good stories and the good work they do. As Dave mentioned, Saturday is slam dunk the junk. You know, some of the things we haven't done is paving program up to seventy-five streets. We haven't done any redevelopment in four years. Let's see, garbage pickup, somebody says we're not two times a week. Well, we are two times a week for part of the year, the important part of the year when, when the garbage is smelling from around Memorial Day through, I believe, the middle of September, somewhere's in that area. So we do have twice a week pickup during those times and we will continue to do that. The empty hole in Main Street, again, everybody knows everything about everything. During the process of putting in the pilings for this building, which is quite a large building, a building next door was damaged, it was a child daycare center. It was damaged to the point where they had to close that building down. There was a long, drawn-out process, which took up to just recently to correct it. That building needs to be taken down, that is, it will be demolished and another building will be going up there. But there's no way the council or anybody on this earth could know that a building is going to crack while another building is being developed, all right? It's unfortunate, certainly not something we planned, but it's an empty hole for a while because there was litigation and that litigation will continue, but shortly that building would be going up and we can't wait. The M and M Building, all I hear about are these new, everybody knows the schedule for the building already and all these towns from all over the country are going to be coming and ruining Hackensack. That building's really going to be used the way it is now. There's no talk of any huge, huge tournaments and I hear disparaging remarks from people saying, "We don't want that kind here or that kind." That, that is like, the, that's not what Hackensack represents. Hackensack represents all of us, all right? All cultures, all diversity, you know, I hear comments, "Oh, they have their own park, let them stay there." That disgusts me, I'm sorry. Well, I didn't say it. I didn't say it. That's a great facsimile, using murders, all right? So the fact that there's four years of nothing when we've stabilized taxes, lowered the tax rate, making your houses worth more, redeveloping our downtown, getting more streets paved, creating facilities for our senior citizens and our youth, if that's not doing anything in four years, well, then, you know, that's, I can't argue with you then. This FAA meeting, very, very important. I got to tell you something, was I at that meeting that was mentioned before? No, I've gone to some of these in the past, going back eight years. And it's, sometimes you, you get the feeling, you talk about fighting City Hall, try fighting the FAA. It's a tough, tough battle. And I was going there before the amendment, any plans of changing flight patterns. The fact that they're considered changing the flight patterns, I started getting involved in it. And let's not forget, we have a, a citizen in town who goes to all these Taneck meetings, Gabriel, and when something is going on, he does come and report here and he'll, he'll, he'll write in. This meeting is particularly important because the FAA themselves will be there. It's very, very important. Somebody mentioned we're doing it because of the, the people living on Prospect. Well, to be honest with you, we're doing it for the whole city, but Prospect Avenue is probably, and the schools in that pattern, including Hillers and Jackson, are so adversely affected by these planes that the FAA actually had to put in new windows, soundproofing and air conditioning in Jackson Avenue School, which they paid for. So, you know, for them to try and say it doesn't affect our quality of life, just the fact that they were willing to pay for these things would, you know, proves that they are responsible. I would love to see something, I've been at my wife's school, Parker, at Hiller School, when it's a hot day, she has to keep the windows closed so the kids can hear her lesson plans. And it's, at part of the school, it wasn't air conditioned and it was, it was brutal in those rooms. And I would love to see the FAA come up and maybe put some new windows and some soundproofing and, and air conditioning in that school as well. So I would recommend all our citizens to try and attend this meeting. Now, I'll address Mrs. Killyn's comments. Mr. Rotino was not asked by me or anybody that I know of about privatizing anything. It was brought up to me from him directly about, you could save one point three million dollars by privatizing. That's where that original number came from with me. And I stuck to that number because I thought Anthony Rotino was probably telling the truth. As far as him with my job, Anthony Rotino gave me a recommendation, God bless him. Vision Media have a lot of questions here, Ms. Killyn, I don't think I got them all written down, but the newsletters, all right, and I certainly don't mean any disrespect towards anybody else who wrote newsletters, Tom Amorato or, or Ron Al Dib, but I happen to think the flyers done by Vision Media were of a higher quality and represented more of what we were trying to get out there as far as a city to the people, because I could tell you, a lot of people had no clue what's going on in this city. I will let the attorney answer as far as your other question is whether it's legal or not. And any ordinance going to be passed will definitely be up to whoever's sitting up here on July first, so, all right?
Shall I?
Sure.
Well, I, I think it's a misnomer to suggest that Vision Media simply put its own contract on hold. You know, this is a discussion that was had with the city manager's office because, given the circumstances and becoming close to the election and there are certain restrictions, which we've talked about up here on the dais regarding certain communications during that window, that Vision Media's ability to fully perform its services at the rate they had been contracted to pay, it wouldn't have been as effective a deal for the city. So, you know, certainly Mr. Ehrenberg was aware and knowledgeable of this. He certainly believed that it was an appropriate action to take, and I believe it was an appropriate action to take.
May I? Mayor?
Well, you can finish it.
Mr. Kleiman?
Just, I missed two and three, I believe. Hold on, let me find where that...
But that was the answer to number one, why he was able to suspend his own contract?
It wasn't per se a suspension, they approached, we did not approach them, they approached the city manager knowing, we, we happen to like their work, all right? That's totally separate. They approached Mr. Ehrenberg about, and I don't know whether he called it suspension or, or how, what did we call it? I would defer to you.
Well, I, I believe that...
I have the, I have the, I have the, the email right here.
Yeah. I believe that, you know, Vision Media in and of itself could certainly make that suggestion, but if the city manager felt otherwise, he could say, you know, "I'm not comfortable with that." I don't believe that is the case in any way, shape or form. I believe that the city manager, and he can certainly speak for himself, but to my knowledge of the situation, felt that that was an appropriate situation. Their contract is on hold, obviously, I don't believe the mayor is saying that, you know, they're under contract through the end of, of June, I believe. the end of, of June, I believe. There will have to be a new process, whether or not Vision Media applies or doesn't apply, if, if the city wants to go out for a new public relations vendor in the following year. They can do that, and they'll go through the same process, and if Vision Media applies, I'm sure they'll be evaluated and considered like anyone else who applied. Though I will point out, when this was done via a fair and open process, Vision Media was the only applicant. So, I see no legal issue with the fact, as long as the city manager is okay with it in saying, "All right, you know, we're not going to get the full benefit of our bargain with them due to the situation as we get close to the election," and saying, "Hey, look, you know what? We're going to hold off on doing anything," which, of course, as we've seen, would be perceived as political if we were doing flyers now. People would be up here saying those are political. So, when the election's over, Mr. Ehrenberg, I'm sure will have a conversation with Vision Media about how they're going to handle the remainder of their contract year, and like every other professional service, or extraordinary unspecified service, or contract of that nature, there will have to be a new process going forward in the following year.
But shouldn't the council know?
That's not, I don't want to start a lot of back and forth. Yes, I want to finish the other questions that I have here. One was, one was, is it important, why is it important to have flyers out, quarterly flyers? Now, they're very important, and I can tell you what, if this council's reelected, even as it is right now, or whatever, I would recommend to whoever was up here that immediately following the election, that quarterly flyers continue, because I can tell you one thing from being in this seat for almost eight years, that citizens do not know what's happening in this town. We have such an apathetic community that it's unbelievable, and people are amazed when they hear some of the things that are going on. Truly amazed. It's, it's, you know, excuse me, thank you. You know, people find out, "Oh, you're rebuilding Main Street." Well, yeah. Now, everybody in here that comes on a regular basis knows about it, but I tell you what, I'd say about 80% of the city of Hackensack doesn't know about it, and it's important for them to know. It's important to know that we're building sports facilities. It's important to know that the seniors are going to have something. It's important to know that there's going to be senior bus trips. All these things are important to get out there. So I would recommend to whoever's in this seat to continue doing that, because, excuse me, whatever, whoever is hired, all right? And that sounded like Regina to me. Sorry to call you out, Regina, but you made it a little obvious.
But that wasn't my question.
No, I'm not going to, Mrs.
But, but it was my question. Please answer my question.
I'm done answering questions right now. And if you'd like, I'd sit down, you and I will sit down afterwards, and we'll go one, one through seven, but I don't even have two, two and three down here, so I'm done answering.
May I reread my question?
No, we're done. I'm done answering these questions.
Well, you're not, you're not answering my questions.
I will answer your questions.
But you're not answering them now. I asked you in public.
You, you wrote off a list of seven or eight questions.
Yeah, so if you didn't get them all, then I'll, I'll reread it.
I didn't write them all down.
I'll just reread it.
No, our time is up. We're done. Thank you. Motion to close the meeting?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kellin Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Done.
See you after the election.
Yes, sir. Does everybody have the election? You're right.